We're at three hundred forty now, and welcome everybody to the Osage National Council of Riddin' on Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty four. As you all know, we all start with a opening prayer. Had some deceased people here lately, and our people, one of them was Kim Bear. She's her thing named Osage, she has a family named Osage, Korean Osage, but her mother. And there's others that have lost their lives. I just want Councilman Chappell to say a prayer for us and think about that.
We're having the Father together this morning hour and do the business of the Osage shareholders and take care of all people, put us in these positions and trusted us with our hearts and our minds and our spirits and to do the best what's in their interest for them. Lord, please watch over all the people that are here today, representing other entities, but especially watch over the members of this council and all the families and stuff of the Osage people that we that we hear and we represent. Lord, please just watch over us as we move through this meeting and give us good minds and good hearts and good spirits to do the best that we can. Lord, just take care of us as we move through the remainder of this day to this evening, Lord, and take care of our families and take care of all the people that are that are sick, take care of those that have lost loved ones, Lord, and just take care of us, Lord, and take care of all the things around this world that's there's a lot of turmoil in this world nowadays, Lord, and just watch over that, bring peace to people and let things get back to the way you would really like for us to live our lives and we assess all these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Are we seated? And we're going to see some ladies.
This is deceased Osage Indians, March twenty twenty four. Alain L. Bell, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Tyler H. Willis, November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. James B. Comfort, March fourth, twenty twenty four. Linda S. Blistine, February thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Judith E. Tents, August thirty first, twenty twenty two. Libby A. Chappell, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Joe Monica Burgess, November twenty ninth, twenty twenty three. Mary L. Gorgman, January first, twenty twenty four. Melissa S. Curry, March twelfth, twenty twenty four. Philip L. Wade, March third, twenty twenty four. Nicholas Gillett, December twentieth, twenty twenty three. Charles B. Williams, Jr., November twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Renee Lado Kerr, March eleventh, twenty twenty four. Randy R. Riddle, March twenty second, twenty twenty four. Lee Ross Cunningham, February fifteenth, twenty twenty four. May the rest be peace.
Thank you, Councilman Chappell, deserve it. We've got a call from Chairman Waller this morning, having some health issues, he won't be able to be here today, and asked me to let everybody think about it. He's been under the weather for several days, he said. Roll call, please.
Councilman Big Horse?
Here.
Councilman Chishawala?
Present.
Councilman Redcorn? Councilman Redcorn? Second Chair Red Eagle?
Here.
Councilman Rebar?
Present.
Councilman Chappell?
Here.
Chairman Waller? Chairman Waller? We have a report.
Thank you, Lacy. Secretary Lieutenant, report, Mr. Trump, you got the floor.
Thank you. Reading following report for today's reading. It's for February twenty twenty four production, for total oil produced, two hundred and seventy six thousand, six hundred and thirty six point three nine barrels. The royalties paid were three million, one hundred and fifty one thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and fifty nine cents. The total gas produced was seventy nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety five MCFs, and the royalties paid was thirty eight thousand, one hundred and ninety eight, or ninety six dollars and four cents. For total gas liquids produced, it was two hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and one gallons, and the royalties paid was twenty four thousand, nine hundred and forty seven dollars and eighty nine cents. For total tank bottom oil, it was two hundred and eighty, two hundred and eighty point six six barrels, and the royalties paid was six hundred and eighty six dollars and twenty nine cents. Water usage royalty paid was a hundred dollars. For waste disposal royalties paid was twelve thousand, six hundred and forty one dollars and thirty nine cents. For rentals and bonuses for oil and gas rentals, we had paid two thousand, six hundred and eighty three dollars and seventy seven cents. For oil and gas bonuses paid, there was three thousand, six hundred dollars paid. There was no amount received for royalties, or for rentals, excuse me, for saltwater easement rentals, it was received two thousand, four hundred dollars. For late payment charges, one thousand, two, or one thousand, twenty nine dollars and ten cents collected for other minerals produced. APAC produced thirty four thousand, seven hundred and thirty six point four two tons, and paid forty four thousand, six hundred and thirty six dollars and thirty cents in royalties for February. Candy Creek Crusher produced eight thousand, three hundred and seventy nine point four zero tons, and paid nine thousand, three hundred and sixty eight dollars and seventeen cents, and that was reported for January. Burbank Materials produced eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty point seven six tons, and paid twenty three thousand, one hundred and sixty five dollars and seventy six cents in royalties, and that was for February. Wilson Ranch and Rocky Banks reported zero production and paid zero in royalties. The Schmidt Brothers produced two hundred and thirty two cubic yards, and paid a hundred and seventy four dollars in royalties for February. We're producing wells. The total number is one, or sixteen thousand, four hundred and nine for oil, there was eleven thousand, nine hundred for gas, we have one thousand, three hundred and forty four for combination oil and gas wells, there's one, or one hundred and eighteen for TA, there was four hundred and ninety four for CO2 injection, there's seventy for water gas injection, there's fifty six for saltwater disposal, a little waste injection, there's two thousand, three hundred and twenty, and for water supply, there's one hundred and seven for approved permits, there's three workover permits approved, there were zero plugging permits, there was two emergency plugging permits, zero emergency workover permits, and five drilling permits that were issued, and there were no new drilling completion reports received for February. And that completes my report. One of the other things I wanted to do is hopefully start to do this at the OMSI line of entertainment, just acknowledge some of our employees that you guys may not work with on a normal basis because they don't necessarily pertain to minerals, but one of the people I wanted to bring over to acknowledge who are you guys on the record is Amanda Kenley Horace in our probate department. We have one of our employees out on leave for a few months, and Amanda has gone above and beyond, works extra hard. I know she deals with a lot of you guys as constituents, so I was hoping to put a name and a face for some of the people that haven't formally met her, but to let you guys know that we've got a few other people out there that you guys may not be able to, I think, are worthy of some recognition.
Thank you, Secretary Lieutenant. Welcome, and any questions from the council before that? I'm sorry, before we go into the section, Roger Wilson, our attorney, pressed to take some issues, so we'll have him there. Sorry about that. Go ahead, any questions from the council?
Thank you, Second Chair. I'd like to, for the reasons I cited in an email, I circulated to all council members and our legal counsel, I'd like to table item nine old business A, the SCS engineer, AEL class one well, to an indefinite period in time.
There's a request from Councilman Rebar to table SCS engineer, AEL class one well? Any motions on the floor?
Well, it's not a motion, it's just a request. I don't think we need a motion invoked on it.
It's just a request.
It's just a request that we table it. It's up to you, I think, to make that decision.
Okay.
I tried to stop that earlier so they wouldn't have to show up to that.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Well, table it now or break the law?
The, Dr. E, Chair.
Have you entertained the motion?
Let's ask our legal counsel that's participating by Zoom. Do you mind if I ask?
Yeah.
Hey, Raleigh, can you hear us all right?
And here's Raleigh.
He's muted.
You're muted.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. All right, sorry to spring this on you unannounced. Well, of course, you knew by being copied on my correspondence that I was wanting to table item nine A was actually, I was wanting it not to be on our agenda for the reasons I cited in my letter until we had done some additional due diligence. And now I brought it for the council since it got on the agenda. Anyway, I'd like to table this agenda item, and do you know whether or not, you know, do you know the proper protocol to do so for us to table this? Does it take a motion and a vote, or can our Second Chair, please conduct your meeting today, take that authority and table it?
I apologize, Councilman Rebar, I am not the best expert on Robert's order of course, or something like those, but for you, I think probably the quickest route to go for any action in a meeting being run by Robert's rules of order is to make a motion, have that motion seconded, and then debated, and then a vote on the motion. That's the standard practice, whether or not tabling an item on the agenda requires that we need to look into for you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Raleigh. Second Chair, I make a motion that we table item nine A.
Motion on the floor to table item nine A, SCS engineer, AEL class one well. Is that second? Second by Councilman Big Horse. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Chishawala?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council, yeah. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. We'll be in touch. Thank you. One question I had, you told me a while ago, Secretary Lieutenant, about appeals, elected to the council, that it's an ongoing deal, and we should be with us as quick as we can.
Yeah, I got a copy of the report Friday. I'm gonna clean it up, and I'll have it over to you guys later today, and then I think we discussed doing it, giving you guys a quarterly update on those.
And then the appeals, I asked for that several meetings ago, and he's getting back with us on that, and about how many there are, and what situation. And he also advised us that we can't do a whole lot with it, you know, just inquire what's going in, you know, so you can't really go to court or anything like that.
Over which, what matter?
The, and then the appeals, places that are under appeal.
Any of the decisions we've rendered that are being appealed at the regional or have elevated beyond that, I was gonna compile a list of those, anything where they're at as far as procedurally, and I think we discussed doing, providing a quarterly update on those, so you guys are apprised of those. There are also several matters that have gone to the IDIA, the Interior Board of Indian Appeals, I can provide a list of those too. Those ones, it's kind of a, it's a quasi-administrative judicial court, so getting updates on those, it goes through solicitors, so I don't have the same information, so updating those, I, it's kind of, when I get the information on those, those ones tend to linger a little bit longer. I think the turnaround on a lot of those decisions is between eighteen months to five years, so, and a lot of those pertain more towards probates, not necessarily towards the mineral side of things, so we'll provide what we have that pertain to the minerals. If you guys want clarification on any of them, I'm happy to espouse on that at the next meeting.
Any questions from the council on that?
No, no, that's, I do have.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Second Chair. Back in February, I had asked about the staffing, and were there any vacancies? I thought there were. I particularly asked about petroleum engineer, and you said that there would not be an additional engineer added to the staff. So now we have Stephen Kohler, who I think doing an excellent job. I just was hoping that maybe there'd be some additional staffing for assistance. But I also asked about the other unfilled positions. I think there was an advertising of a position for lease, for maybe lease management, is that?
Correct.
Has that been filled?
It has not been filled, it's currently advertised, and I think it closes, from my recollection, on the twenty second.
Are there, are there any other positions being advertised?
That's the only one presently advertised.
But are there any other vacancies that are just not being advertised?
There are none that are, there are none that are basically, that are considered funded vacancies, that have active recruitment efforts ongoing right now, so that's the only one that is looking to be filled immediately.
Which one?
The lease man.
The lease manager, that's the only one. Okay, so, but I think there are other vacancies, or maybe, maybe you don't plan to fill them, but there were vacancies from what there used to be, positions that are no longer filled, whether they're actively, well, I guess what I'd like to know is the lack of filling those vacancies that are over there, does that have anything to do, is that a moratorium on hiring? If so, is it, is it related in any way to your negotiations with the Osage Nation in their quest, I guess, maybe, to assume some of the functions of the DIA? Is it related to those, to those negotiations that maybe it's on pause, on hold, until, while, during those negotiations?
Understood. There is no general moratorium that I'm aware of, however, I'll disclose on the record, and I think I sent a letter to Chairman Waller too, or to the OMC generally, that I recuse myself from the, any compact negotiations, I've worked on the nation's side for some of those, so, under federal law and ethical regulations, I had recused myself from those matters.
Who would be the next authority under, would it be Kenny Kennedy?
Kenny and Katie Evan Hope.
Where we could pose that question to Kenny Kennedy, and who else?
Katie Free, Katie Free.
Okay. All right, then, that's all I have, Chairman. Oh, no, one other question, man. It's been brought to our attention, the, I noticed that on our producing wells, a total of sixteen thousand, four hundred and nine, you've broken down and added some new categories, which is helpful. I like, I like that you've included the CO2 injection, and I guess all seventy of those wells are probably in the North Burbank capture point, but maybe, but there used to be a total of eighteen thousand plus wells, and that most of those, all, all those wells were active wells, oil and gas wells, or oil, or your gas, or your combination, oil and gas, with less than except three thousand, two hundred approximately for saltwater disposal and EOR injection wells. So that's what made up that eighteen thousand, three thousand, two hundred plus or minus, and the rest were these other two categories, the categories of producing wells. Now, you've, you've gotten subcategories now, or additional categories, and really divided it up even further, which is really helpful, but the total number of wells has dropped from eighteen plus to sixteen plus. So some people that view this, and I didn't at first, but now I do now, it's been brought to my attention, is like, what happened to the difference between the sixteen thousand, four hundred wells and the eighteen thousand plus? Was it just some weeding out of, when you went through the process of creating all these new categories, did you finally figure out and tweak it and realize that there was some duplication of some sort, or what's the difference between about fifteen, sixteen hundred wells?
Some of these, from what I understand, and we're trying to reconcile all the information we have, some of these relied on self-reporting from lessee annual reports, and some of those were ones they had drilling permits for that had never been completed, so they've still put on this list. So we went in and purged those ones that we went in and contacted the operators to, for, to get verification, so that's some of those removed. Other ones were ones that had still been listed as active, but had been blocked, and that never, we'd never received the completion report for the plugging operations. So as the nation's gone in to start doing field inspections for some of these orphan wells, basically just going out in field verifying to see whether, determine whether they're orphaned or not, we've been able to take the data they provide to us, go in and further reconcile some of our data, so some of these, if they are not actively being operated, we don't go up field inspect every, you know, periodically, the same way that that they're starting to do it now, so we're able to get better records when doing field inspections. Our data is great, but there's no substitute for field inspections, so we got them out, got eyes on the field. Some of these, the GPS coordinates are slightly off, so they had been on there, and there may have been a duplication to where, one, it was encoded into our system, it was using the precise GPS location, however, when we had a permit, it was using an approximate legal description, so it was encoded twice, even though there was only one of those, so it's a cleanup effort. This still probably is not a perfect number, but we're getting closer and closer each day.
That's what I was, you know, that's what I call was happening, and I appreciate you doing that. You mentioned the Osage Nation's plugging endeavor. The, do they have any pending plugging permits at this time?
None have been submitted, to my knowledge, no.
And they'll be included in our reports?
You guys get a list of all of the permits.
Will they include the Osage Nation's plugging permits as well?
Correct, correct.
Okay, but to your knowledge, they haven't submitted any yet?
That's correct.
Okay, if they, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm not real familiar with their grant, but I do remember that they had a sizable amount of numbers as well that they, I think were suggesting they could plug in the first year of the van, and I think there's, they may be halfway through that first year, no, but if they were to present, submit dozens of plugging permits all at once, say, let's just pick a number, say they, they sent over twenty five permits to plug wells, trying to catch up and meet that deadline, that anniversary in that one year, what would you anticipate the time period to approve twenty five permits?
I mean, I can't, in a vacuum, I couldn't speculate, depending upon the quality of application they submit, it may be ones that have to be turned back over to them, which is gonna delay things, so I, I mean, it's kind of how long's a string. Until I did what they produced to us, I can't tell you how long. I've got assurances from IESC, the Indian Energy Service Center, that they're, will jettison and provide additional resources for you.
I'll share that again, I'm sorry.
The Indian Energy Service Center, it's one I've discussed before, I reached out to them, they have petroleum engineers on staff that they basically agree to, to provide additional assistance if, if the need becomes that they do give us a volume, or there's something that they provide to us that's unanticipated, our petroleum engineer is backlogged or isn't able to do his normal duties.
So, and, and it all yields to everybody else here in a minute, but I'm sorry, the, keep bringing up other subjects, the, that, so, so that would be for the, the nation's plugging permits, that, would that, that those same resources still be available for, for all the permitting? Say if, for instance, we're fearful, or we're anticipating, I guess, the rollout of new CFRs, and maybe somebody might want to try to beat the deadline of those rollouts, and somebody decided to submit twenty five drilling permits, would you also be able to use that same agency, if that's what it is, to rapidly process drilling permits, actually would plugging permit?
I mean, I can't commit to whatever, do in a hypothetical scenario, but I do consider drilling permits to be one of our, you know, outside of emergency things, those are one of our priorities, so I would jettison resources to focus on those, and IESC is firmly committed to assisting with the orphaned well plugging program as needed.
Okay, and I didn't mean for it to be a gotcha question, but just throwing, throwing it out there for conversation.
I'd be happy to be in that scenario.
Kind of lead me into how we come along, and let's see apart. What morning do you think, just any day now, we'd open up the newspaper and see this?
I have not heard a day now.
Okay, thank you, Chief of State, Jim, that's all I have.
Any other questions to the Secretary? That was a question I was gonna ask, having heard you had dates on the American missions. That's all, thank you, thank you, Secretary.
Thank you, Secretary.
Next item on the agenda is Bureau of Trust and Administration. Thank yourself, Ron.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Troy is unable to be here today. We don't really have anything new going on, except we wanted to advise you that the Trust Beneficiary Call Center, which is our toll-free number that answers questions for all of Indian country, they have changed their hours, so they're no longer open the later hours that they used to be, so they're only open now from nine to four thirty Mountain Standard Time. So that's gonna be, you know, for, it's gonna be ten to five thirty, so it's quite a bit of a change, and they're no longer available on Saturdays. So the agency may be your best bet for that, or if you, you know, and there's a lot of times that we're answering phones after those hours as well, being able to tell, or, you know, sometimes we can keep later hours, and a lot of times, you know, I answer my phone twenty four hours a day pretty much, so, you know, if anybody calls after hours, and, you know, that we're still available at the agency most times, but we did wanna advise you of that, and that's really all we had to report, business as usual, everything is going fine, so.
Thank you, Secretary. Any questions from the council? Second Chair.
You're welcome, have a good day.
Thank you, have a good day. New, onto new business, Councilman Big Horse on the agenda, is he not here yet?
The treasurer reports.
I'm sorry.
The treasurer report?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We got a new treasurer too, Clark Bass, new treasurer of the Osage Nation. Welcome, Clark. I'm a little new at this right now, so, go ahead, Mr. Clark.
I'm gonna have Angela Brown do the report, that I just received a word, I was confirmed, and I want to have you discuss the power of me, and assure you that treasury knows the importance of minerals council to the nation, and, you know, you will, you will strive to serve you well, so.
Thank you, Clark, appreciate it very much.
My name is Angela Brown, I'm the Assistant Controller for the Osage Nation, and our balance sheet for March thirty first, twenty twenty four, total assets for eight hundred and fifty five thousand and sixty nine dollars, total liabilities were seventy one thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, and fund equity was seven hundred and eighty three thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. The net change in fund equity is an increase of a hundred and thirty seven thousand The net change in fund equity is an increase of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars, which is reflective of the revenue over the expenditures on statement. Um, total revenues month-to-date for this period were two hundred and fifty thousand, year-to-date, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Total expenditures month-to-date are a hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. Year-to-date expenditures are three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Revenue over expenditures month-to-date, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Year-to-date, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. Our current year fund balance increased in the amount of three hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars from the beginning of the current fiscal year. Any questions?
Questions for the council, to the treasurer? Any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question, Secretary.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, and, and I apologize for not being that familiar with the financials. It's not really my area of expertise. But I do know that we, we receive headright funds, uh, from the nation, didn't we not?
Secretary.
Is that reflected in these, uh, in these numbers? Where would we see, where would we see the accounting for those funds?
Um, is that the funds that I send you the statements for?
I am aware of this situation, I've been updated. I am currently tracking the progress, but right now I don't have an answer for the fully, but I am aware that I do have staff investigating.
So we do have, we do have the funds earmarked or associated with the headright or headrides?
Yeah. I, uh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I have another thing, I forgot to, uh, talk to Clark yesterday. And, uh, since he's a new treasurer, and I had been in contact with Superintendent Chumbly about this matter. And what happened, he went to the Treasury first, when Tyler McAdams was treasurer, and he sent it to the VIA to be verified about, about the account. And it got verified by the field solicitor, then it goes back to the Treasury. That's what I said.
So it will be coming back to the Treasury?
It's, it's back there right now.
Which you anticipate start being on these reports in the future?
Yes.
And it'll show the balance of the account? Is it a separate account, a separate banking account?
Yes, it is, it's a separate account.
And will it stay in the same account, or will it be put into a new account?
It'll probably stay in the same account.
I believe it was called the education account when it was under the Osage Nation. And the, uh, Torsten Geringer, as we, as we all know, about a year ago, requested to research it, and she got it back. Then Scott Vickors on the Osage Nation, Congress made a bill to return it to the Osage National Council. And that's from there.
Return the funds?
Yeah.
So if there was a particular account, an account name?
It was from the old tribal council, that's where it came from.
I would think that we'd want to change the name of the account, since it's not associated with education anymore.
It kind of got diffused there when Tyler McAdams was there, he didn't want to do it, whatever. But, uh, when I, then I got in touch with the superintendent, and he said, well, they wanted to verify to field solicitor and VIA, and it got verified. So now it's back over to the Treasury, Clark Bassin.
Okay, well, so, Mr. Bassin, I guess what my question is now, since you are new, and this is a new, uh, evolving situation, with it bouncing from one thing to another. Once you have a chance to digest it, I'd be curious to know where I could see the numbers, see the account, see how the account's structured. Uh, they, I think that this council should have some involvement in the name of the account and other matters concerning the account, maybe even what may we retain the funds? Uh, these sort of things. And so with that, it's just something I'd like, I'm not familiar with, but I'd like to be familiar with. And of course, uh, I respect your, 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 the brief period of time that you've been, have accepted and been, uh, put in this position. And congratulations, thank you. That's all I have, Secretary.
Thank you. Any, any other questions, the treasurer? Thank you, Clark. Thank you, have a good day. Now, we're going down the agenda, new business, Councilman Redcorn was not here at the present time. Should we go on to the next item? Which is bi- biannual meeting agenda on seven B, seven B. Biannual meeting agenda, I believe Lacy got some things to decide on.
Uh, May ninth. May ninth, here in the chambers, so.
Is that on Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday. Thursday. Yeah, so we do need to get the agenda over to them immediately.
I believe there's, uh, off here, one of the past, um, agendas, everybody can look at that. If there's any disagreements or add any add-ins, you can add on at this time, I would imagine. It's pretty much the same as what we've always been doing.
So where can I find that list?
First page, Jim.
New business.
Oh, here it is.
If you want to, you can move this to after executive, so that you can sit on it a little bit.
You can.
I would like a little time to give back some consideration.
Okay. Can't talk to Raleigh about it too. Okay, all right. We're going to just skip it for now?
Yeah.
Okay, this is temporarily. Go on. We'll talk about it in more or less than a decade?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, AEP Transfission Line Rebuild. Jared, Jared Gerald, Mr. Beep, phone up, make yourself proud.
What do you have, members? I apologize. Uh, this is a personal, uh, casual, last night, especially in attendance, but I brought a few of our subject matter experts here, in case you guys have any particular questions. I brought a few of our, our subject matter experts here for, in case you guys have any questions.
Okay.
That I'm not able to handle.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, I appreciate your time. Uh, this is a project that we have already spoken about and acquired a two fourteen lease waiver. But due to some circumstances out of our control with our interconnection, um, to Western Farmers Electric Co-op, uh, we've had a change of scope. Uh, so that's why I'm here in front of you today, uh, where you are, uh, that small change of scope is, is changing our, uh, our presentation that we provided you guys, uh, beginning of last year, I believe. So, um, we have a few additional poles and a small section of right-of-way that we'd be acquiring to accommodate that. Um, and we're doing this so that we don't have any extended outages on that Western Farmers line and, uh, the, the corresponding, um, neighborhoods and cities that, that would provide.
How many, how many miles is?
At the same mileage, uh, if you will see, um, on, on slide two, it's still our, our five point two miles, uh, of rebuild. Um, the only change, and, um, this would be outlined on slides, I believe, six and seven, the Web City Cap Edition. Uh, so previously, uh, we just had our box bay, uh, that's, that's the slide there. Um, previously, we were just, a part of our scope was building the box bay, um, for the Web City Cap. And Western Farmers' responsibility was to, um, complete the interconnection there for their line. Due to some circumstances with the interconnection and, and Western Farmers, um, they're not able to complete the work in time for us to, uh, complete our outage in time to not have, um, the additional outages that are unplanned. Um, so we are, uh, pulling together all the resources to accommodate for these two additional structures that, um, AEP is engineered to be, uh, accommodating for, for that. So we will be acquiring, um, uh, less, about zero point six one acres, uh, north of the, the box bay to accommodate these two, uh, uh, additional poles. So on this slide and the next slide, you can see the engineering plan and profile design, um, of these particular, uh, structures to make this connection, interconnection. And so currently, this is the, the only change in scope, um, of our, our project. But in good faith, since, uh, just these, these, uh, four structures, um, and in connection, we're out of scope for our original lease waiver permit, uh, and they do change our soil calculation slightly. Um, we wanted to be here in front of you all and present it as opposed to having email or phone conversations.
Secretary, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So we had already, uh, adopted a resolution or, or no, this bill? Did, did the, did the amount of material, uh, was it at a level that was within our labor authority? And so my question is, this revised, uh, operation, is it, is it going to exceed? Is it going to, uh, increase the amount of material?
It is going to increase the amount of material. It will not increase the previous number that, uh, the thousand yards. Um, the increase is on slide twelve or fourteen. Uh, we went from five hundred thousand yards projected, uh, to now a projected of six hundred and thirty-six.
Six hundred and thirty-six? And, uh, Chairman, I'd like to ask, uh, Councilman Redcorn, I know that you're pretty familiar with, uh, the bulk material. Is that, is that, are those numbers still within the range of our labor authority?
Six hundred and thirty? Sorry, um, six hundred and thirty-six. I'll have to check, but generally, I mean, on procurement, we don't tell them our lids and about, that's not something we discuss with customers. They don't, they generally don't know those values, but a lot of times they figure it out because of the interaction. But, and I, we had this discussion, again, in other areas, not this, but to not allow outsiders to know those boundaries, we have to change our policy.
Okay.
So I feel a little uncomfortable discussing that front area.
Yeah, I appreciate it, that's fine.
That'll keep bidders from trying to stay under a certain level or manipulate a bid just so they can get something that they want.
Okay, so from your understanding, we've given them a waiver?
Yes.
Originally, they've increased the amount. Uh, are you here today to request a, a new waiver?
Yes, sir.
Is that why you're here?
Yes, sir.
And besides, kept explaining the, the change?
Yes, sir, that's, that's, uh, why we're here is because we do have this change. Uh, and obviously, we want to operate with you all, uh, and, and continue to work towards this, this, this project getting completed. Uh, with this, we obviously, um, I've had some discussions with Lacy and friends around here about the, the urgency of this timeline, because our, our current outage, um, window to complete this additional work, um, this is going to end, uh, after the first week of next month. Um, so I've had a few phone calls with Lacy to get in on this particular meeting, uh, to have this discussion with you all today.
Yeah, well, Secretary, I'm not familiar with this process like, uh, like some of the other council members. So I was just asking the question, just, uh, that's why I wanted to yield to Councilman Redcorn.
Is, is effort here today?
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Talk to Lacy, some of the issues you and I just discussed, Mr. Trivars, why? Uh, I recommend we just have him talk to the chairman and possibly be still under the authority of him, based on resolutions we've passed before, and we move on.
Have we passed a resolution already?
We have given him the authority under certain limits to sign directly.
So maybe?
The reason is, so these guys won't have to come and wait a month to come talk to us, they can get started and go to work. Now, there's times where they feel like they've opted, but after talking to Lacy, I think talking to the chairman is your best bet.
So all I need, all I need you today is a waiver?
Yeah.
I'm going to back up, say, have this gentleman talk to the chairman, he's been given the authority under certain conditions to sign without our resolution.
Okay. Chairman Waller's not here today, he's, uh, got some health issues, so, uh, should we table it?
No, I don't think it requires tabling. We, we've heard the story, we've heard the update, and we appreciate Kevin and explaining to us what you're doing, and keeping us in the loop. And I, I think, uh, I think, uh, according to Councilman Redcorn, the next procedure would be for you to directly contact, uh, Chairman Waller.
Okay.
I got a couple of questions, Chair. Is it all the same route, is probably, is going to be on the same route, or is the route changed?
Yes, sir, we're not changing anything. The only change that we have is, is those two, um, angle structures that are, that are there just north of, of the Web City Box Bay. Uh, we're not changing the route for the majority of the line, five point two miles. Uh, we're just having to add these, these particular structures in, uh, because of the interconnected agreement and, and the misaligning timelines, uh, with, with us and with Western Farmers.
And, uh, I've written there too this morning about several entities that you got to go through. One of us, uh, Landover, right?
Yes, sir.
And you also got to go through the Osage Nation, is that correct? What department do you go through with them?
Um, well, with our, any of our land, um, right-of-way related concerns, we have right-of-way department and, um, we have external counsel, uh, that deals with any, like, VIA or Osage Nation, um, discussions outside of, of, uh, you all's meeting here, where I have the point of contact for that.
You have to do anything with a state of Oklahoma.
No, sir.
I used to work in PSO a long time ago, and I was a meter reader.
Yes, sir.
And I became a dispatcher. I can, I can show you my leg when I was a meter reader too. And I've got to go a couple of times, dispatcher job. But it's good company, good company. Dispatcher job was, somebody had to be there every, every, every hour, every day. And I, for five years, I didn't get to sleep. But, uh, I moved on. So we entertain a motion for a waiver, is that what we're ready?
No.
Just to let it, let it go to the chairman?
Yeah.
You got any comments on that again, Councilman Redcorn?
Uh, if we're doing no vote, I'm going to direct this gentleman to talk to our chairman that follows their resolution we've already passed.
Jared, you hear that?
Okay, so we thank you for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
We appreciate your time.
We'll be in touch and let you know when the chairman available. I believe we're going to need to go back to Councilman Redcorn's, uh,
Okay.
Item on, item on agenda.
Apologize, I called Lacy yesterday, or I think I called her, did it late this morning, so I apologize. Um, filling the vacancy. That's what we're talking about, Secretary?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to, uh, first of all, acknowledge the unfortunate passing of our previous council person. Uh, knew her really well, leaned on her and all. Knew her really well, leaned on her in a lot of communications. She was very knowledgeable of our mineral estate. She had some great comments when she was at the BIA, she used to work with her there early, early on as well as all, a lot of y'all here too. I just want to express my thoughts that we missed unfortunately her, able to serve out her term and agree with the family and those things. We've just, my public statement that it was an honor to serve with this authority. Right now, I feel like it might be time to fill that vacancy. And at this point, we had another passing, the person that came in, not in the election, the last election. And that was Cynthia Boone, and I've served with her in a lot of capacity. And she was a staunch supporter of the O.S.H. Act. And she's greatly missed, the effects that she's done that helped us come to the point where we are. It's the same as I feel with others that's helped. Moving down that list is the next person, which is Stephanie Irwin. I think she's sitting in the audience here. She came in, I believe, 10th, is that correct, in the last election? Nine?
No.
10th, okay. And I'm a firm believer in letting the people decide who their voices are gonna be. I'm not sure if that's still the case as we watch things happen elsewhere, not here in those states. But I won't comment any further. Regardless, I feel it's not our choice, it's the choice of our shareholders, who they want next, which I think it should be Stephanie Irwin. I did serve with Stephanie on Minerals III, I believe. She was very, very instrumental at getting Tom Fredericks, the attorney, kind of situated and lined out on all our lawsuits, which I thought she did a great job there. She was a staunch supporter of, you know, some of the things we were doing back then, the wind farm cases, the cases that were environmental, and I won't go into all of them, but I thought we were pretty successful. And I think, you weren't you the lead contact when we were doing all those lawsuits?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I was.
And so, and one thing I remember Stephanie, Ms. Irwin, the councilwoman at the time, was we went to an environmental meeting out here at the, what the heck is that? My, that store out here, the cultural center back then, civic center now. And a lot of people were standing there and a lot of landowners. And I saw Ms. Irwin shake her fist at these landowners and say, "Look, you know, you're gonna have to kind of the point of understanding that mineral belongs to these O.S.H.s." And she stood up and said straight up to those folks out there, that's a tough position to have. A lot of people want to sit down, don't say anything, but she was very direct in her comments. It's the same way I saw her in DC to make those points known. And you were on the team when we got free May and just started flagging the program. And then, I didn't bring the book, but I was trying to find it. But during that tenure, we had the highest payout by, per headright. And it was up to about $14,000, I believe. So we were also, you know, even though BIA continues to roll out the things that are seen adversarial to production, we were able still to get the highest payout at that mineral steering of a headright. It was up to about $14,000 per headright. So with all that being said, I would like to recommend that we consider Stephanie Irwin to be this replacement chosen by the shareholders and have her fill out the remaining of this term.
Yeah, we finished?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make the comment, not being a scholar on the 1906 Act, it is versed in it as a lot of you all, that I do think that it requires that we have eight councilmembers. We only have seven. I know when we lost Councilman Yates, we were at the very, you know, last year of his term, I believe, or closer to it. O.S.H. been on council during, O.S.H. been on council four, which we didn't fill his position, but it was towards the end of the term. This is quite different, this is, we're not quite to the halfway point yet. And so I think that, I think we're required by the 1906 Act to have a councilmember, and I agree with Councilman Redcorn, that it should be, the reason we're sitting in the chair is that we're sitting in because we were put here by the constituents, the headright owners, by vote, by majority vote. And like Councilman Redcorn said, it went through the annivers, or the sequence, that Stephanie Irwin would be the highest vote getter of all the candidates that ran in this last election. I believe the O.S.H. Nation, when they have a vacancy in Congress, they have some similar procedures to either, I think, to have a special election, depending on how far they fall within that term that they're serving when they have a vacancy. But, so I think it's appropriate to fill this position, and I agree with Councilman Redcorn that I think it should be the next highest vote getter. Thank you, that's all I have for the chairman, or Second Chair.
Any other comments? Councilman Chappell?
I appreciate the comments. Redcorn, Mr. Rebar, and that mentioned Ms. Curry's abilities. Undoubtedly, she was very qualified. It was a pleasure to work with her, and I've known her since I went to school, Indian camp for 50-plus years. Stephanie, I've known her in this, ever since I went to, again, aging myself when we was all at Indian camp, her sisters, her family, her father, mother, I mean, I've known these folks a long time. I think I respect her abilities on this, as council previously. Some of the things that she's done, Mr. Redcorn went down, a small list of some of her accomplishments. And she has the ability to cross lines and stand up when she needs to stand up. And she's, importantly, she's the focal, she's willing to work with other people. Two years, over the near two years we've been on here, she's been an advocate. She's here most often in all of our meetings. She offers a lot of expertise, opinions. Oftentimes, we all want to agree, and it's always good to bounce things off of our constituents at show at our meetings now, and oftentimes, it helps us see things more clearly, be more cognizant about how we're voting and supporting certain issues or not supporting certain issues. But at the end of the day, as Mr. Rebar mentioned, by the O.S.H. Act, I guess there's certain things in there that require it to be eight. I'm not for sure about as far as our own procedures within our chamber, but I feel like your qualifications that she brings will definitely enhance the body as a whole and will therefore make it better for us to better serve the shareholders that we represent. So I would be in favor of having Ms. Irwin step in. And as in role, as vacant by Ms. Curry, I have no problem with that. As a matter of fact, I would look forward to working with her. Thank you.
Councilman Tishwal.
I've served with Ms. Irwin before on the third council, and she is, she's a good, she'd be a fine asset. And plus, like it or not, gentlemen, we probably more than, more than, often than not, we also need a woman's point of view. Plain and simple, there's seven of us right now who's like, yes, I'd, yes, I'd be in favor. We definitely, you know, she's numbered 10 on the list. And plus, like I said, we also need another point of view, so yes, I'll be in favor.
Anybody else?
You're all welcome, make the motion.
I entertain a motion to accept Stephanie Irwin as the eighth member of the fifth mineral council. Entertain a motion.
So moved?
Need a second. Seconded by councilmen, big orders. Any discussion? I have a little bit of discussion. When Councilman Andrew Yates passed away, he was a big asset, as you know. Some of you may have served on, he may not, but you all knew him, he was, he worked for the O.S.H. Nation at one time. Whether this, whether this looks like a demanding job here, whether it looks like it or not, believe me, it is, it's a demanding job. I mean, you sit in his seats, like Chairman Waller, it's been a year. I've been on for my third time, this will probably be my last time. Getting up and aged down, I've got other pursuits I wanna do. When he passed away, we just kinda left it alone. We didn't feel like he, he knew every township, every section, every easement in O.S.H. County. Every time I asked him about township, he knew the fact that where it was, he knew where the people were. He knew what the situation was. That's the kind of person that sits on this council. That's why, more than likely, more than likely, that's why we didn't replace him. Because he was, he replaced him, and he was hard to replace. When she sit here, Melissa Curry, the late Mrs. Curry, she was almost in that same situation. There wasn't a question we didn't ask her that she didn't know the answer, especially about the BIA, real men and fair men. That's why this is a very demanding job. And like I say, people come in here, they look at it, they go, you must do this, you know. But it is, it's a very demanding job. My dad was involved with it, as all of our people were. My brother were involved in it, and also were involved in it. I grew up when I was this high, it's all over her tribal council, as well as others. And when I got here, it just almost felt like I was at home, you know, because my people, my folks on my side, even on my mother's side were involved many, many times. So Melissa, when she wasn't here a whole lot, it deterred her from that. She was a good person, she was a good person, and very, very known, but she wasn't here very much. That's why it's very important that when, just I'll give you a good example. My brother wanted to run, she, the first thing I asked him is, "How's your health? How is your health?" He didn't answer me. And when he got in there, he got, he got complications. It's a very demanding situation. So I'm willing to, she was the ninth or 10th, 10th, not 10th on the list. I thought she was gonna get in. But I want her to be ready for it when that time come, because we're dealing with, if she go up here, we're dealing with Washington DC, and she's been through that before. I wasn't on the third mineral council, but I was ran. Councilman Redcorn brought me in about 2016, that's when we started working on the hellboy of our career. Toss it over the nation then.
Nation took it.
Yeah, they took it. But we started. And I don't like to mention Bill then, but he was part of it too. But he was a big part of it too. That's what I have to say. I'm gonna wish you well, Stephanie. I want you to do the best that you can. Our people say dollars, that means do the best that you can. That's the first thing my dad wanted when I went out into the world of dollars. Try your best, that's really what that means. And it also means don't give up. When you get to that point, and over here, real vital issues for our people, that's when you need that kind of mindset. Believe me, I know, I know how that is. I've heard from brothers, I've heard from my dad, I've heard from my uncles, and they do, they knew what they were talking about. They sit here many times, even as far back as 18 acres, way back. I heard from my dad, I heard from my uncles. I didn't get to see our grandparents because they were, we were born after the war in the war days. The folks got together after the war, they were already married when she was in. That's all I've heard since I was just that high. I remember the day my mom, my mom answered the phone in Marshall, where those phones were like this. She answered the phone and laid my, her cousin, Oscar Logan Senior, had died. And they put my dad on the council, I was eight years old at that time. I'll be involved with this, and I remember they were going to Washington DC when this trial was just about ready to get exterminated. I remember that very, very, very well. Councilman Rebar represented very well. Came that close too, very, very close. But that's what we're in for, I'll tell you. Call for the vote.
Would it be possible to add the swearing-in date over there?
I'm sorry?
Can we add the swearing-in date, just so?
I couldn't hardly.
Swearing-in date.
What now?
Swearing-in date.
The date to swear for?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
To be the main, third main?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May third. Any more?
Yeah, I need a hotel room.
Council, oh, sorry. Did you say call for the vote? Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappell?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Tishwal?
Oh, no, yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I do appreciate the support that you've given me today. And I'm gonna do my utmost best to fulfill that seat and do what's right for the O.S.H. Trust, the 1906 Act, and the annuities. We need to take care of the annuities. Anyway, thank you, I do appreciate it.
Thank you. On to the next item on the agenda, drum keeper donation, that's me. We've been giving 5,000 a piece, I've had some thoughts about this, $5,000. Any comments on the, on how much money we should give to drum keepers? Should we up it or just keep it the same?
It's the same.
I'll go ahead, I'll be, I'll be the voice where, you know, the one that everybody can get on to this time.
Go ahead, Chair.
All right, I'm gonna do it. You know, that's why, why these committees have expanded so much in the past few years. I mean, you're up to 100, 150, that's why, that's why they got so much bigger and you're supposed to help out. We'll keep it at that, I'm just, I went ahead and voiced it. It's almost, it's almost like it's a racket nowadays, all right? Just put it that way. I've said it, y'all can get pissed at me if you want.
So is that a motion?
No, I'm against it. We'll keep it at five, I'm all for that.
I entertain a motion to keep it at 5,000 to Wapafli, Gonzoli, and Passo.
Yeah, second. Yeah, I'll, yeah, so moved.
Okay, I'll second.
I got a motion by Councilman Tishwal, second by Councilman Rebar. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappell?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Tishwal?
Yes.
Councilman Red Corn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, council. That's the last item on that agenda. Do you think this, I entertain a motion to go and execute. Motion by Councilman Chappell to go and execute, that needs a second. In a second. First, second. Go on, execute.
Oh, second.
Second by Councilman Big Horse. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappell? Councilman Chappell?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Tishwal?
Yes.